There it is, six o'clock. Um, is everybody here? I think I've seen everybody. It's Bill and I've seen Anne. I think, Bill, are you here?
Hello, I'm here.
All right. Well, wow. You don't want us to see your living room?
I don't want you to hear my dogs and kids in the background.
Well, it is six o'clock, so I'm going to call this to order. This is the April twenty-second, city council meeting. We're doing it virtually to keep everybody safe. And this is a very important meeting, particularly for the council. This is where we switch mayors and get council realigned and continue to do the city's business. So at this point, I called the meeting to order and would like everybody to take off your hats and stand and we'll do the pledge of allegiance, please. Gunnison, do you want to start us?
Sure.
I pledge allegiance
To the flag
Of the United States of America
And to the republic
Where riches stands, one nation
Indivisible
Indescribable With justice for all.
Very good. And, you know, I guess I have, Lisa, are you there?
I am present.
I figured you would be or the rest of us wouldn't. If you'll do roll call, please.
Absolutely. Dave Bowman.
Present.
Barbara Bynum.
Present.
Roy Anderson.
Present.
Judy Ann Files.
Present.
Doug Glassbell.
Present.
Gunnison Clamp.
Present.
All city councillors and our youth council representative are present.
Very good. Are there any changes to the agenda, including additions and deletions?
There are no changes to the agenda, but for the record, I'd like to note it's the April twenty-first and not the twenty-second, which I think you inadvertently said. So, okay. No big deal, but for the record.
And the call for public comment agenda is the time when concerned members of the community may publicly voice their concerns and discuss items of interest. Please note that no formal action will be taken on the matters raised during this time. Comments made during this time should be addressed to council that pertain to matters of at least general importance to the city and its operations. Please be aware that neither the city council nor city staff are expected to respond or engage in discussion or debate. Personal attacks and disagreements, personnel and employment matters, the use of profanity or ethnic, racial, or gender-oriented slurs are prohibited, as is any disorderly conduct which violates state or local law and shall not be permitted. And so if there are or is anybody that would like to speak to us, this would be your time. Seeing and hearing none?
Uh, Mayor Bowman, if any of the attendees have anything that they would like to say, they can just raise their hand and I will let you know. I don't see anyone requesting permission to speak as of now, so I think we will just move on.
All right. Now, I'm not on the, I don't see myself on the screen.
I think you flipped your camera around. I think your camera flipped, so it's showing us the back of your computer and not the front.
All right, let me try to get in here again then.
You could go sit in that chair.
Well, I'm sitting in that chair. That's what I
You're not sitting in that chair. So Dave, there's under video, there's a, uh, video settings. And then under video settings, I think there's a flip where you're basically It's your camera. Are you using your iPad?
Yeah, I am.
So I, it switched to the camera on the back of the iPad instead of on the front.
All right, at this point, I've lost the pulse. All right, hang on.
I'm happy to see it's not me having difficulty today.
Well, it should be right there.
That's good. We got Bill up. Is this where we're supposed to all sing?
Please no.
Dave, on my iPad, it's on the left-hand side. It says either switch the camera or switch to the full view. And you want to probably touch the one that's, you can see my thumb, top left. It'll say switch the camera.
Where's your wife when you need her?
There it is. We can see you now, Mayor Bowman.
You're muted.
Yeah, Dave, turn your, there you go. You were muted.
All right, I think I'm ready. And this is item six, unfinished business to be considered by the current city council. Approval of minutes, city council consideration of the minutes of March twenty-four, twenty-twenty, special city council meeting, the March thirty-one, twenty-twenty special council meeting, and the March thirty-one, twenty-twenty regular city council meeting. And I would go ahead and take a motion from council.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the March twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty special council meeting, March thirty-first, twenty-twenty special city council meeting, and the March thirty-first, twenty-twenty regular city council meeting as presented.
I'll second that. And Lisa, are we gonna have a real roll call vote?
Absolutely. Dave Bowman.
Present. Uh, aye.
Barbara Bynum.
Aye.
Roy Anderson.
Aye.
Judy Ann Files.
Aye.
Doug Glassbell.
Aye.
Mayor Bowman, we have a unanimous vote.
Fantastic. And the next thing, acknowledgement of outgoing city councillor. And it is my pleasure to present this plaque to Judy Ann Files. Let me read it before I have a few words to say. Award of recognition presented to Judy Ann Files with sincere thanks and appreciation for your dedication to the city of Montrose and its citizens. Your commitment to community engagement, the celebrity of diversity, crucial policy development, and the improvement of parks and trails has transformed our community and helped make Montrose a wonderful place to live, work, and raise a family. Judy Ann was the mayor from April twenty-four thirteen to twenty-fourteen, and again, April seven twenty-seventeen to twenty-eighteen, mayor pro tem, April twenty-twelve to twenty-thirteen, April twenty-sixteen to April twenty-seventeen, city councillor, April twenty-twelve to twenty-twenty, Colorado Municipal League Policy Committee Member, twenty-sixteen to twenty-twenty. And Judy Ann, there's just not enough words to thank you for what, all the things you've done for this city, from the improvements, the infrastructure, the connect trail, help on the rec center, to so many things, your, your continued work on improving Centennial Plaza. The city is forever in your debt. And, and we thank you very, very much. And I'll And any final words for the city and for council?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Bowman, for that. Um, it'll be fun to someday see that plaque and maybe have it here with me.
I will get it to you tomorrow.
Oh, no, there's, there's not that material. But I thank you very much. It's been a fantastic eight years. And you guys go out there and just keep being positive and make this community as great as it needs to be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judy Ann.
Thank you very much.
I'm gonna give council a minute for any of the councillors that want to say anything.
Judy Ann, thank you so much for your leadership and your mentorship to me personally, and for everything you've done for our community and for the citizens. It's very, very much appreciated. And you're leaving some really big shoes to fill.
I'd just like to thank Judy too for all the help she's provided to me and advice that she's given me. Even if she doesn't think I paid any attention, I was.
I have to echo those same comments. Um, I remember there was so much to learn when I became mayor. And if it wasn't for Judy Ann, I probably would have fell on my face more than once. So it was such great coaching and mentorship. And thanks for all you've done for our community.
Well, again, thank you to all of you. I'm sure Dave Frank has done a great job in my position. So congratulations. Go on.
Very good. Thank you, Judy Ann. And again, thank you so, so much. You've done so much for this community. Um, it's just unfortunate we have to end in Zoom. But I do know that at some point, once this is all done, Judy Ann, we're gonna bring you back and do a community celebration the way that you deserve to be celebrated and recognized. Um, none of us wanted to end on Zoom. We're gonna bring you back for a big all-star presentation. So please, uh, keep your schedule open. And with that, we're gonna go into the swearing in of newly elected officials and city clerk Lisa De Piccolo, if you will administer, administer the oath of office to newly elected city councillors, Roy Anderson, District Three, Dave Frank, District Four, and Barbara Bynum at large. And Lisa, I will let you take over.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman. I gave each of our newly elected officials a copy of the oath. And I'm gonna individually just ask them to read that oath out loud. We'll go in ballot order. We'll start with Mr. Anderson, if he's ready.
I'm ready.
Mr. Anderson, please raise your, yeah. And recite your oath.
I, Roy Anderson, do solemnly affirm that I will support and bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution and laws of the United States of America, the State of Colorado, and the Charter and ordinances of the City of Montrose, and faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the Office of City Councillor to which I have been elected according to the best of my ability.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next, we'll have District Four Representative Dave Frank. And Mr. Frank, if you could please raise your right hand and recite the oath.
I, Dave Frank, do solemnly affirm that I will support and bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution and laws of the United States of America, the State of Colorado, and the Charter and ordinances of the City of Montrose, and faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the Office of City Councillor to which I have been elected according to the best of my ability.
Thank you, Mr. Frank. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And finally, we'll have Barbara Bynum, our at-large representative. Ms. Bynum, if you could please raise your right hand and recite your oath.
I, Barbara Bynum, do solemnly affirm that I will support and bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution and laws of the United States of America, the State of Colorado, and the Charter and ordinances of the City of Montrose, and faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the Office of City Councillor to which I have been elected according to the best of my ability.
Thank you and congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome to all of you.
Absolutely. Welcome to our new council. And with that, we'll move on to the selection of mayor and mayor pro tem. The city will select a mayor and mayor pro tem for the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty one term. And I would open up for nominations for the mayor.
Mr. Mayor, Barbara Bynum for mayor.
I would second that.
Are there any further nominations? I declare nominations closed. And at this point, I would consider a motion for acclamation.
Mr. Mayor, I'm in for a motion of acclamation.
Do I have a second?
I second.
And I guess a roll call vote, Lisa?
Okay, uh, Dave Bowman.
Aye.
Barbara Bynum.
Aye.
Roy Anderson.
Aye.
Dave Frank.
Aye.
And Doug Glassbell.
Aye.
We have a new mayor. Go ahead, Lisa.
We have a unanimous vote.
Very good. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and do the mayor pro tem. And at that point, we'll turn it over to Ms. Bynum, our new mayor. And with that, I would open up nominations for mayor pro tem.
I nominate Doug Glassbell for mayor pro tem.
I second that nomination.
Any other nominations? Hearing none, I declare nominations closed. And would honor a motion for acclamation.
I shall move for acclamation.
I second.
And, uh, roll call vote, please.
Okay, Dave Bowman.
Aye.
Barbara Bynum.
Aye.
Roy Anderson.
Aye.
Dave Frank.
Aye.
And Doug Glassbell.
Aye.
We have a unanimous vote.
Fantastic. And with that, I welcome Mayor Bynum to run this meeting. And I'm gonna sit back and relax.
Don't, don't go anywhere too quickly. My first item for business as the new mayor is to make a presentation to you, Dave Bowman, as the outgoing mayor. And so I too have a lovely plaque for you here. And I will read it. It says, presented to Dave Bowman in appreciation for your leadership, professionalism, and dedication to the Montrose citizenry by serving as their mayor, April twenty-nineteen through April twenty-twenty.
Thank you. Thank you very
Thank you very much for everything you've done to lead this council and to serve as our mayor for the past year. Um, you also leave some big shoes to fill, and I'm sure I'll be asking you for advice and help along the way. So, uh, thank you so much for everything you've done for not only council and city staff, but for our community.
Thank you.
Hey, the next, and I'll bring it to you tomorrow. The next item of business is, um, number eleven, which is the four-one-five-two North Townsend Edition Annexation. Um, I will turn it over to Amy Sharp.
Thank you, Mayor. Is that sharing correctly?
I'm not seeing anything on my screen.
Okay, let me try again.
Greg, does she have all the necessary permission? There we go.
Yeah, there's always an extra button that you don't think you need to push that requires. We see everything now.
Okay. Does it show it as a present, as a note slider?
It's showing it with your notes.
Which I don't have any of, so.
But that looks good. We can see it pretty big. Do you all agree?
Yeah, I, I think that'll work great if you, if you're there and can roll with that.
Okay, I'll leave it there then. Okay, first, I wanted to share the annexation schedule. Excuse me. Just to bring everybody up to speed on where we're at on this project. On March second, we had the council work session overview of this project. On March seventeenth, we did the council resolution to set a hearing date. Excuse me. On March twenty-fifth, we had the zoning hearing at the planning commission. On April fifteenth, the annexation impact report was delivered to the Montrose County Board of Commissioners. And then we're now to the first reading of the annexation ordinance, and the second reading is scheduled for May fifth. So it's showing the third slide then?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So this project was referred to the city when the applicant wanted to subdivide the property. Since the property is located within the urban growth boundary, the county referred them to the city, according to the city-county IGA. The IGA gives the city the option to annex properties within this area as well as the urban growth boundary. The area here is urbanizing, and more than one-sixth of the perimeter is contiguous to city limits, which supports annexation. The applicant chose to pursue annexation due to these factors. The forty-one fifty-two North Townsend Edition is approximately ten-point-one-six acres in size. And the parcel is located northwest of the intersection of Highway Fifty-Fronded Road, Progress Lane. And on the map, it is highlighted there in yellow, kind of in the upper-left corner. It is within the city-urban growth boundary, as I mentioned, as well as Monocan Water Service Area and the city sewer service area. The site currently has a residential unit as well as a business, um, which you can see in the photo there on the right, which is Colorado Fireside Masonry. And so it provides employment opportunities as well in the area. The comprehensive plan future land use map designates this area as an employment center. And it's shown here with the black dot in the upper-left corner, so you can see where that's at, kind of in the dark purple, which shows employment center. At the March twenty-fifth Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the zoning request for B-three general commercial, which actually fits the existing zoning and general conditions in the area. It's adjacent to other general commercial areas, as you can see on this map as well. So in summary, the proposal is consistent with the public health, safety, and welfare and city annexation policies. An annexation agreement was not needed for this one. The purpose of this annexation is to subdivide the property. The annexation impact report and planner's testimony was sent to the Board of County Commissioners on April fifteenth. And the city council hearing for second reading is scheduled for May fifth. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Um, at this point, we are gonna first consider Resolution twenty-twenty dash zero eight, which is findings of fact for the annexation of four-one-five-two North Townsend Edition. And at this point, I will accept any public comment. And Greg, are you handling the technology of the public comment? So if someone wants to say something, you'll let them in?
Yes, yeah, they raise their hand or request to speak and I can make that happen.
Okay, great. Don't think anyone has said they'd like to make public comment. Do we have any questions from council on this resolution? Any questions from you, Gunnison? Great, okay. Then I could accept a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty-twenty dash zero eight as presented.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Lisa, will you take a roll call vote?
Absolutely. Barbara Bynum.
Aye.
Doug Glassbell.
Aye.
Roy Anderson.
Aye.
Dave Bowman.
Aye.
And Dave Frank.
Aye.
Mayor Bynum, we have a unanimous vote.
Thank you very much. The next item of this is Ordinance twenty-five-zero-one, which is a first reading. And that's the city council consideration of this ordinance on first reading, an ordinance of the City of Montrose, Colorado, for the annexation of the four-one-five-two North Townsend Edition. And at this point, we hold a hearing on the matter. So I will open a hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to make comment? I don't believe there is anyone, so I will close the hearing. And except, or anyone from council have any questions on this second piece, the ordinance piece? Gunnison? Okay.
No.
Then I will consider a motion.
Madam Mayor, I would make a motion to pass ordinance twenty-five oh one on first reading.
I'd second that.
Thank you. Lisa, will you take a roll call vote?
Barbara Bynum.
Aye.
Doug Glassbell.
Aye.
Roy Anderson.
Aye.
Dave Bowman.
Aye.
Dave Frank.
Aye.
Mayor Bynum, we have a unanimous vote.
Great, thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is number twelve, which is Ordinance twenty-five zero two, which is a first reading. And that's consideration of ordinance twenty-five zero two, an ordinance of the City of Montrose, Colorado, providing for the zoning of the forty-one fifty-two North Townsend Edition as a B-three general commercial district. I will turn it over to Amy Sharp.
So I'll just refer to the presentation I just gave and the information that was included in that presentation towards the end. If you have any further questions, please feel free to ask me.
Thank you very much. So for a, um, ordinance with this zoning, we hold a hearing. So I will open the hearing officially. Now is the time, if there's anyone from the public who would like to comment.
Mayor Bynum, I see no one requesting to speak.
Thank you. I know we're moving a little slowly, but I don't want anyone to feel like they didn't get an opportunity. Okay, great. Then I will officially close the hearing and accept any comments from either council or youth council at this time on the zoning piece. Anyone have any questions or comments? Amy, you must have done a fantastic job of explaining it. And I think it's very helpful that we go over these in such detail in work sessions two weeks prior to when we take official votes. So in a lot of cases, that's when we asked questions if we had any. Okay, so I will, um, I will consider a motion on this ordinance.
I'll make a pass ordinance twenty-five oh two on the first reading.
I'll second it.
Great, we have a, a first and a second. Um, so Lisa, will you please call a vote?
Barbara Bynum.
Aye.
Doug Glassbell.
Aye.
Roy Anderson.
Aye.
Dave Bowman.
Aye.
Dave Frank.
Aye.
Hi.
Mayor Bynum, we have a unanimous vote.
Great, thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is item number thirteen, which is a fuel contract award. And this is the council consideration of the award of a fuel and oil contract to Parish Oil of Montrose. I'm gonna turn it over to the city's Public Works Manager, Jim Shy, to tell us more about this.
Thank you, Mayor Bynum and council. Um so yes, this is a um we issued this R F P recently because our fuel contract had expired. Um so we issued R F P, we received uh three qualified bids. And um and as we talked about in the work session, um the best value was definitely in uh Parish Oil's um proposal. And so we're recommending awarding this fuel and oil contract to Parish. Um with that, I'd answer any other questions, but nothing has changed since we talked about it at work session.
Great, thank you very much. Is there any public comment on this? I will say all of the information is in the council packet. So if you're following along, anytime you wanna know more, you can see the bids that um that city council has in front of them. And you can see the different prices that were received and that go into the discussion we had at work session in order to make this decision. Okay, I was stalling, so public could raise their hand. No, um I don't think we have any comments.
No questions have been raised, thank you.
Thank you. So from um from city council or youth council, does anyone have any comments or questions on this?
Just for clarification, the difference between the number one and number two diesel? If you could explain a little bit about what the difference is between those two items on the bid?
Yeah, so during the winter months, uh we will have them either blend or supply of number one diesel, um depending on the temperature. So a number two diesel um can gel if it gets below fifteen degrees. So a lot of times in the winter, they will blend a number one and number two together. And if we ever had a real winter around here, they would give us straight number one.
Thank you.
Any other questions about this contract or comments before we call for a motion? Okay, see none. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'd make a motion to award the contract for fuel and oil to Parish Oil of Montrose as presented.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Lisa, will you do a roll call vote, please?
Barbara Bynum?
Hi.
Doug Glassbell?
Hi.
Roy Anderson?
Hi.
Dave Bowman?
Dave, I think we're waiting for your vote. You might be on mute.
Hi.
Dave Frank?
Hi.
Mayor Bynum, we have a unanimous vote.
Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda tonight is number fourteen, which is which is the asbestos abatement contract change order. Council consideration of a change order to contract with A R C abatement for asbestos abatement at four three zero South First Street and four three nine South Second Street. The total amount of the change order is nine thousand and fifty dollars. Again, Public Works Manager Jim Shy, will you explain this one? We know I know council talked about it in detail two weeks ago at work session. But for everyone following along, will you tell us a little bit about this?
Yeah, yeah, I can recap. Um so this is a change order to our contract that we issued to Arc Abatement uh recently, which was to uh remove and dispose of the asbestos out of the two facilities that were adjacent to um the existing police department. So it was the old Wells Fargo drive-through, which has been demolished, and the building to the south and west of the police department, which is still standing right now, but the asbestos has been removed. Um and so the reason why there's a change orders, there were um some unforeseen um asbestos-containing materials um lying underneath other types of building material. Uh was unforeseen by our um assessment that was done. And so therefore, our abatement contractor did remove asbestos. And this is basically paying them for work that was unforeseen and not bid on.
And I think that's kind of the answer to the to the obvious question, which is we almost always include a contingency of ten percent. And had we included that, this would have been covered. And in this case, you kind of just told us why, but we didn't include a contingency because we had an estimate that was supposed to be the final price.
Yeah, we uh we should have included a contingency. This is what I'm learning right now. Uh we we didn't because we did have an assessment done, and that's why we felt a little more comfortable with it. Um usually, those assessments will find any and all asbestos in the building. In this case, it was um kind of an odd construction type, and they covered things up that wasn't wasn't expected. Um and that's why even the assessment didn't catch the asbestos that was there. Uh but doing this again, we would include a contingency to cover for this sort of thing.
Right? I think that's important. You called it an assessment. I called it an estimate, and they're actually different. It was an assessment, which is why we thought it was more accurate than an estimate would have been. So I appreciate that clarification. Thanks. Does anyone else have any questions about this? Okay, great. Thank you very much. Then I would consider, oh, any public comment or any public questions on this item?
I see none, Mayor Bynum.
Thank you. Then I would entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the change order to the asbestos abatement contract with A R C abatement as presented.
I'll second that.
Great, we have a first and a second. Lisa, will you call a roll call vote, please?
Barbara Bynum?
Hi.
Doug Glassbell?
Hi.
Roy Anderson?
Hi.
Dave Bowman?
Hi.
Dave Frank?
Hi.
Mayor Bynum, we have a unanimous vote.
Great, thank you very much for that. Okay, the next item on our agenda tonight is item fifteen, which is staff reports. And the first piece of. Okay, the first thing on staff reports is um the sales use and excise tax report. I will turn it over to Finance Director Shani Wittenberg.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. Um let me see if I can share my presentation with you. Um not sure if you can see that. Let's see.
Not yet, Shani.
Just a second. Let me try that again. Oh, there it is. All right, can you see that? Okay, great. So this is the sales use and excise tax collection report from February of twenty twenty compared to February of twenty nineteen. General fund sales and use taxes are collected at three percent. February sales tax compared to February of twenty nineteen, our retail sales tax are actually up eight point six percent. Construction use tax down sixty-four point two percent. Use and auto use tax down twenty-one point three percent with total collections up three point four percent and a positive budget variance of six percent. Year-to-date sales and use tax compared to twenty nineteen, retail sales taxes at five percent are approximately hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. Construction use tax is at ten point two percent or nine thousand dollars. Use and auto use tax is down three and a half percent or five thousand dollars with total collections up four point seven percent or approximately hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. Budget variance is still positive, seven point two percent, or a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars more has been collected than we anticipated in February. Public safety sales and use tax, this is the point five eight percent that was voted on in November fifth, two thousand nineteen to fund um public safety staffing and constructing a new public safety facility. February sales and use tax for the Public Safety Fund, um two hundred and forty-five thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars was collected. And that is actually six point eight percent more than we thought we would collect in February. The Montrose Recreation District tax is point three percent. It was voted on April first, twenty fourteen, to fund the new community recreation center. In February, we collected a hundred and twenty-seven thousand three hundred and forty-five dollars or two point six percent more than we did in two thousand nineteen. Year-to-date, we've collected five point one percent more than we did in twenty nineteen. Our excise taxes are um hotel excise tax is point nine percent and restaurant excise tax is point eight percent added to the sales tax. February collections over February of twenty nineteen, hotel excise tax is actually down nineteen point seven percent. It's not a huge surprise. Uh restaurant excise tax up eight point eight percent with total collections of three point eight percent and a positive budget variance of seven point five percent. Year-to-date collections compared to twenty nineteen, hotel excise tax up ten point five percent or a thousand dollars. Restaurant excise tax up ten point nine percent or seven thousand dollars with total excise tax being up ten point nine percent or approximately eight thousand dollars. Positive budget variance of fifteen percent or eleven thousand dollars. Retail sales enhancement, this is the portion of the vendor's fee that the vendors agreed to give back to the city for promotion of businesses in Montrose. And in February, we collected thirty-one thousand four hundred and fifty-one dollars or twenty-seven point nine percent more than we did in February of twenty nineteen. That's mainly due to the fact that we are collecting the public safety sales tax. Um so they're calculating their vendor's fee on a larger um portion of tax. With that, that's all I have. I'll entertain any questions you all may have.
Does anyone have any questions at this point? I think these are gonna get really interesting starting next month.
I agree.
We'll make sure to reserve a little more time for your presentation and there'll be lots of questions.
All right, thank you.
So the next item under staff reports would be our public information report. I will turn it over to City Manager Bill Bell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I uh just wanna add, he just presented. The uh numbers should be coming out soon for March, and we'll relay that to council before. We won't wait until the next report period. Next month, we'll get you the information right away. Uh in the next few days, hopefully we'll have some rough um idea of what March was like. It's important also to know that our building permits and our construction activity is much higher January and February of this year as opposed to January and February of two thousand nineteen. So even though COVID affected a lot of the retail businesses, the service businesses, construction was still booming. And they were listed as an essential critical industry, and they kept going. Housing, uh building permits, can commercial building permits, all of those things were up. And uh Ann and and Archie and and all the planning and building services team have been very, very busy. So that's a good sign, I think. So as we start looking at recovery, we're already ahead of the game as far as the construction trades and some of the industries, which is really, really good. Uh the biggest thing I wanted to highlight is uh something that Chelsea can also add to. Uh but with the new governor's directives uh through his press conference, and we're gonna read through all the detailed language. Uh we are really pleased to be able to put out some information today to the public. We'll be putting a lot more information out over the next several days, uh talking about an April twenty-seventh soft reopening uh of our community's uh business industries based on governor's guidelines, of course. And so April twenty-seventh will be that um changing some of the retail to curbside instead of not being open at all. Uh and things like car washes, the private use of golf carts. And just a lot of different things that'll start uh reintroducing people into the the local economy. Uh but doing that in a smart and safe fashion uh based on the data and and guidance from not only the governor's office, but also our county public health department. So you you probably saw some of that already. We made sure to copy council on that today. And uh well, those will be getting more in number and more detailed as we move forward throughout the rest of this week. Excited about it. It's been a long time coming. But uh the number one priority for all of us was keeping our residents safe. And uh and then second behind that is keeping our economy strong. We can answer any questions, Chelsea, if I missed anything you wanna add, or anybody else on the review team for that matter.
Could I ask a question real quick?
Yes, please.
Okay, so uh Mr. Bell, so you talked about the twenty-seventh under the governor's guidelines is the projected date to uh reopen different businesses around the city. Is that also when city offices will start reopening?
That's a really good question. So uh the twenty-seventh, as far as the businesses, will be that soft reopening. And then looking toward May fourth is more of an opening. And the same would go toward uh the workforce in our community. There's some directives coming out from the governor's office related to the workforce reductions. So industries that weren't listed as critical, manufacturers. A good example is uh Mayfly. They produce, you know, fly fishing reels. Was not deemed to be a critical business, so they were closed down. Uh other industries in our community that weren't listed as critical will now be able to bring fifty percent of their workforce back. And they're also supposed to be staggering their shifts and honoring social distancing, wearing masks, doing all those things to keep their employees safe, but to get them uh producing product and getting that product delivered to the market. Uh that effort, I believe, is gonna be headed up by the county. As far as a lot of what I was reading today, the county is looking at a way to get the workforce back up and running in our community, where the city is focusing more on getting the businesses themselves for retail. And and how how can we help the businesses sell their goods in our community? The county is focusing on the public health side as well as the workforce reintroduction. So as a city organization, we'll be following those same principles. Right now, we've we've gone to total touchless when it comes to working with the citizens. And uh we're wearing masks while we're doing our work. We're in very small work teams as opposed to the the larger team uh environments we were used to. And as we move forward, uh along with the other industries in our community, we'll start reintegrating people into the workplace in smaller groups. Uh still wearing masks and taking safety precautions, but opening up some of our internal meetings, uh might be in person, but just in small groups and social distancing, rather than doing everything virtual. And then as we move forward on the community side, we'll start looking um at going from tier four to a tier three, depending on what the county public health and uh Dr. Joe uh provide as far as statistics and recommendations in that regard. Same question.
And a another question. So uh of course, this is a secondary thing. It's not necessarily an essential service, especially right now as tourism is at a low. But uh I'm not sure if this is anything that's been a priority lately. But I just was curious, as a volunteer there, do we have a projected date for maybe opening the visitor center by some point in, I don't know, late May?
That's a good question. Uh the visitor's center, as far as tourist tourism services, uh will rely rely a lot on the governor's directives. Even with the April twenty-seventh and May fourth deadlines that they're putting out for some soft reopenings, uh it's still recommended that only critical travel takes place in the state. And so from everything I've read, it's not recommending people go on vacations around Colorado, travel from one community to the next unless you absolutely have to. And so I don't really think we wanna roll out and encourage that behavior until we absolutely uh can do that in a safe way based on the state guidance. And so I think for at least the next month, we're gonna be looking at uh our Office on Business and Tourism, continuing to provide uh information regarding the COVID response and also focusing even more on getting our businesses back open, communicating with all the businesses in our community, helping do the cross-promotion of those businesses and local marketing to get people from being scared and staying in their homes, to reintegrate them out into the community as shoppers and as consumers again. Thank you. Good questions.
What other questions?
I was just gonna add one more thing. Um we had talked about doing a two A report card. And when we um we wanted to give a uh update on a quarterly basis to the community on where we're at with all of the elements of two A when it was adopted. And we'll have that at the next council meeting uh to roll out publicly. We are shooting to have that at the April meeting. To roll out publicly. We were shooting to have that at the April meeting, but it got delayed a little bit just because not a lot's been happening honestly at the city. As far as hiring new people and that kind of thing. But we do have the graphic all ready to go. The card itself checklist has already been. Marked down for what we've achieved. So that'll be in the next city council packets.
Great. I know we all look forward to seeing that. What other questions do anyone on council have for Mr. Bell about that public information report? Where can members of the community go? I I know there seems like as much information is coming out from the governor. It leads to even more questions. When is my favorite restaurant gonna be able to have me in their facility? When is my favorite movie theater gonna open? When is my, who can they, who, where can they go to find that kind of information? The businesses themselves or their or their customers? I'm asking you, Bill.
I'm staring at Chelsea's box on the screen, hoping she gets my, you know, my. Chelsea can answer answer that the best.
Yes, so there's some great resources on the state of Colorado's website where they like to. Frequently post the most recent updates and I am trying to search for that link as we're chatting right now. City of Montrose dash or cityofmontrose.org slash covid nineteen. We have been posting everything as we get it. So David Spear, our webmaster, has been awesome about posting those type of things. As we get the information at the city and he tries to be consistent as we put things out each day in our daily update. That does also go onto our website either under the business resources tab or right on the landing page at covid nineteen. So the state's website is covid nineteen dot Colorado dot gov. Again, that's covid nineteen dot Colorado dot gov. And so that is a great resource for people to be. Really in touch and in tune with things as they're coming out from the state of Colorado. And then again, our team, Bill, myself, Anne, Blaine. Rachel and Steven are also great resources of people from the business community have specific questions. We can, we can answer those for them personally as well.
Great, thank you very much. So would it be fair to say that the city of Montrose is mirroring. Exactly the information we're getting from the state and from the governor's office. We, we are not being more restrictive. We are not allowed to be less, but we're not being more. We're basically looking at the directives coming out of the state. And the governor and following those. Is that a, that's how I've been explaining it. Is that accurate or is there a better way to think of it?
No, I think that's great. We are trying to follow the black and white guidance provided by the governor's office. And CDPHE because what we've found is the governor will have a press conference and he'll talk about things. And then within a day or two, CDPHE is actually the administrative arm of the governor who actually outlines all the. Details of what he just said. And then a lot more details and numerous pages of information comes out of a half hour press conference. And so we're trying to follow all the black and white requirements to the letter of the law. We're trying to be conservative because we are a conservative group of people. We want to make sure that we're complying with what our state wants us to do as a community. But as with any guidelines and recommendation, there's always vagueness and gray areas and that's where there. There's confusion. That's where most of the discussion time takes place, honestly. It's not about the easy black and white closures. Or openings. It's about those gray areas open for interpretation. Sometimes we've found that the governor's office. And CDPHE will put in language that says, here's what the intent is, but it's really up to the local. Jurisdiction, whether in your community, it's the city or the county or the county public health or the sheriff's department. It really depends. How your city and counties set up are all a little bit different. And so that's where we spend most of our time is interpreting gray areas. Which Stephen keeps reminding me is why I hated law school and why I definitely did not become a lawyer. I do well with those gray areas. Yeah, does that answer your question?
Right, do you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question for you, Bill. I wondered if we are monitoring our local. Confirmed cases and our deaths and if we have a curve and. And are watching whether or not that's flattening on a local basis like the state and the nation is doing. Maybe, maybe the county's doing it. I'm not sure, but that's what I wanted to ask you about.
Yeah, I think Chief Hall has an answer.
So yes, both the commanders and I have been attending daily emergency operation. Meetings that are hosted by the county and by public health. Those are run by both the county emergency manager and then Dr. Joe, the public health. Coordinator. And so currently, we're at seventy nine confirmed cases in the community. And there are nine deaths that did increase. You should know that part of those increases were as a result of some state requirements that. Really mandated that all whole counties in the state look at some of the other deaths that. Were associated with with this virus and add those to the count. So. I, I think it's really, really important to add for the community. For safety that as this, as we start opening up businesses, et cetera, and set soft opening. This is not just the light switch turns on and I think everyone has heard that nationwide. This is still a very serious, very dangerous situation. And I think it's up to all of us, especially city employees. That even off duty, if there is such a thing. We're being watched as well and we're, we need to model correct behavior. And that means that when we're out in the public, we're wearing masks, we're social distancing. We're doing the things that we are preaching that our our public do. And that is so, so very important. I think as we move forward. But yes, we're attending those daily, you know. I can't tell you that there's been a flattening of the curve specifically for Montrose County. That we are still getting positives that are coming in. I can tell you the good news is, is that the hospital. I believe as of yesterday's update only has two positives in in the hospital currently. That required hospitalization and that their overall patient count was very manageable. So I think the hospital has done. Excellent job in preparing for a potential surge. And and they're, they're continuing to be forward looking in that. So I feel really positive about. That where that is currently and and we'll just kind of see where it goes. And honestly, it's up to our citizens and it's up to all of us. To model that correct behavior so that we can continue to keep that resource available. If we, if we see a spike.
Thank you, Chief Hall. That was important information.
Thank you. Any other counselors have any questions? And that includes our youth counselor?
From the hospital staff. And one of the things they made comment on echoes what Chief Hall was saying. Is that they have had a swell, but we have not had a surge. And that they're encouraging the public to continue to do those social distancing. And the wearing of masks. And but they're, they seemed very positive about the ability of the hospital to respond. And the, the way they have been able to respond. But they want to make sure that we understand that it is still creating a huge burden on all the other aspects of the hospital. Because of the restrictions by the state. So the, the less we break the law or break the rules. Or break social distancing, the better off we are as a community.
Thank you. Okay, I don't see any other questions about our public information report. So at this point, I will ask any department heads or other city staff if they have any. Thing they need to tell us tonight. Yes, I see Chelsea.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just wanted to mention and remind everybody, the public tomorrow, that we do have our weekly business update call at eight thirty AM. It is via Zoom and you can find links to that at cityofmontrose.org slash covid nineteen under business resources. Or on the city's Facebook and DART's Facebook page. But tomorrow will be an exciting panel. We have. St. Hanson County Commissioner gonna give a quick update, just sort of talking about how we're gonna safely open with businesses and keep people safe and the communities safe as we do that. And then the remaining twenty minutes of the presentation is gonna be our own Caitlin Love, who is our community marketing specialist. And she's going to help businesses. With social media during this time. And so she's gonna give a great presentation on utilizing social media, which statistics have shown the public's usage is up. By tenfold nearly of social media. And so we're gonna help businesses utilize that and use it as a tool to project them. Into this new economy. And so that's gonna be one that people won't want to miss. But if you do miss it, we will be re-recording and reposting that as well. And so that's all I have for you. Just wanted to make that announcement and happy to answer questions if needed.
Thank you very much. Those Wednesday morning calls are really great. Any other city staff?
If I may welcome, it's an odd time of, of a situation to welcome an employee, new employee. You know, I welcomed our new Assistant City Attorney for Public Safety, Matt Magliaro. Both of us wearing masks and we waved to each other across the room. It was kind of bizarre. But he's jumped the, jumped into things and hit the ground running. Nobody really believes a lawyer when they say another lawyer is doing a good job. So. I'd like to ask Chief Hall if you have any comments. Since he's doing primarily working in for the police department and directly for you and the commanders.
So he's, he's already this, just this last week been an excellent resource, both for the command staff of the department, keeping in mind that. That's a two A position. And then he has also been an excellent resource to our police officers. Who have already reached out to him to interpret some, some of the latest Supreme Court rulings on things like traffic stops. Et cetera. I, I told Stephen just here this last week that I wish every police department had. Not only a public safety attorney, but someone with Matt's caliber. He, he's going to be fantastic. We're in the middle of indoctrinating him into ILP. And then he's also. Being that next set of eyes from the legal office's standpoint for our Lexi Poll policy. Which he's, he's gonna be fantastic. So we've just got so many things on, on board for him to do and. He responded to the challenge very well and. I can't say enough good things about not only the position, but the individual there also. It's gonna be great. Thanks, Stephen, for.
Sure, it, it kind of hurts a police officer to say so many nice things about a lawyer, doesn't it?
Not at all. Not in this case for sure. Some of my best friends are lawyers, actually.
Thank you both. Any additional staff comments before I move to council?
Yes, I'd be happy to give a youth council report.
That'd be fantastic. Addison, what do you, what do you have for us?
Well, first, I'd, I'd like to offer my thanks to Ms. Judy Anne and all the leadership she's provided for the city. I'd like to congratulate. Yourself, Madam Mayor, and Mr. Roy on their reelection and Mr. Dave Frank to his election to the. Office of Council. So here, I won't focus on what we've had to cancel or anything. Just focus on the new, the new programs that we're starting up, many of them utilizing social media. So our biggest program right now is tutoring for elementary and middle school students offered online via Google Hangouts. And each member of Youth Council has each provided a subject or two that's sort of in their expertise. And then they, they pick the day and the time out of the week where they can offer private tutoring sessions. We actually, myself and Kaylee and Michaela, the Youth Council Supervisors. Were able to have a, an interview with Mackenzie Moore from the Montrose Press last Friday, I believe it was. So there's actually an, an article in, in the press now. About our tutoring services. So that's a big thing we've been doing. Just sort of put, also just on our social media, just been putting some fun stuff, fun activities here and there. One thing we've done is Montrose trivia each week on Tuesday. So the first one came out today. Be sure to check it out. We do. Montrose trivia. So we'll do about three questions per week, just fairly basic. Some challenging, but mostly fairly basic questions about Montrose. So that's another just engaging activity that we're working on. And also, just to close that out, we, in the coming months, will be starting recruiting processes for the next. The next Youth Council term because about half of our council is seniors. Who will have to move on after this year. So I think that's about all that I have.
Great, thank you very much. That sounds really exciting and I love the way you guys pivoted away from the stuff that you had to cancel. To figuring out how to still be effective and contribute to our community online. Good job.
Yeah, and it was a fast transition. I mean, one week we were going about, well, yeah, maybe we can still do this. And the next week, it's all out the window. We had to generate a completely new mindset for, for different ideas. To engage with the community. And everybody on Youth Council came up with a tutoring idea really quick. It's something I think will work really well. And we got it out there right away, like maybe a week or two after we thought of it. So. Yeah, so that's available. And yeah, that's all I have. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Great, good job. Thank you very much. The rest of council, we don't really have a particular order. We usually kind of go in order of how we're sitting, but everyone's different on the screen. So I'm really just gonna open it up to whoever would like to go first to start in and we'll make sure everyone gets their turn.
I'd just like to say thanks for the support from the folks on my new position. And looks like I've got some pretty good shoes to try and fill. But fortunately, I've got several people there to keep an eye on me. And thanks to Judy.
Thank you very much, Doug. Dave?
Yeah, I guess just to change things a little bit, I want to look forward. I've had a lot of questions about what's the Montrose Summer Music Series going to do this summer? And it seems like every time I make a change. And push the button on Facebook, I have to make another change. It's been a real interesting couple of weeks. I, I think that the best news is we are still planning on having four shows. We have canceled the June five show. We don't think we're gonna be ready for the public to come out that soon. We are hoping that by July third, which we've got Nikki and the Motor Cars coming up from Austin, Texas. We're hoping that we're gonna be ready for that show. The second show will be July seventeenth, the Bluegrass Band out here. Out of Southern California headed by a guy named John Jorgensen. He was supposed to come last summer, but unfortunately was in Milan, Italy. That night playing for Elton John. That's the kind of caliber of people we got coming in the next summer. And again, that's July seventeenth, so we'll have two shows in July. I've made the decision, we had our band for August seventh canceled. They were out of Boston. Didn't think that maybe they could get enough gigs between Boston and Montrose and back again to make it worth their while. So what we've decided is we're sort of gonna have the, the Montrose Government Stimulus Band play. Donnie Morales and AJ Fullerton have agreed to put together a band for that night. Both of those guys are full-time musicians, so they haven't been working for a month. And they don't know when they're gonna go back to work. The Montrose Summer Music Series thinks that the best thing to do is take care of our local musicians. So we'll have a local night and Donnie and AJ will head that up. And our final show will be in September. So we're planning on four shows. So if you're a sponsor, no. We're doing everything we can to get your name out there for the community. We can't wait to see you at the Black Canyon Golf Course. We can't wait to see you at the Black Canyon Golf Course. It's been a, a, a tough month and it's still going to go on for a while. Please, everybody, stay home, stay safe. So come July third, we have the biggest Fourth of July celebration that Montrose, Colorado has ever seen. I know the OBT is going to work really hard to work with us so that we're going to start it July third, Friday night, July fourth, Saturday. Let's hope and pray and everybody stay safe and do your job. So that come July, we have got one of the most phenomenal tourist seasons that Montrose has ever had. So uh, I just thank everybody in the city for all the hard work they've done. The citizens that are saying stay, safe, wearing your masks, understanding that, yeah, it's a tough time. But if we all work together, I mean, if we think about the tough times that America's had, sitting on your couch watching Netflix isn't that big a deal. We do feel horrible for the people that aren't making any money right now. And I believe the citizens of this community, once we lift the restrictions, are going to be out there supporting the local economy. And things are going to get much better faster than anything anybody thought. So Barbara, congratulations on being mayor. I wish you the best of luck. And council, we've done a great job for the last several years. Judy Anne has been the mentor to all of us. And I look forward for all of us working together and working together with staff. We're going to be even better come September than we were in January.
Thank you very much. Who's next? Roy, Dave, Roy, you want to go ahead?
Yeah, sure. I uh, I wanna, I guess, give a shout out uh, to all the grocery store employees that I think they're running really smooth. Uh, there's more and more food on the shelves. And uh, I, I think uh, healthcare workers, the, the city workers that continually uh, provide our services, uh, pick up the trash and the recycling. It's, it's all been uh, going very smoothly. And um, Chelsea's uh, notes that uh, have been coming out about the virus and the different businesses and everything. And I noticed some in Spanish now, so thanks for doing that. Um, there's just uh, so many people to thank. And, and I think uh, Bill, your leadership has been outstanding. And as we move into the next phase now, I'm sure that uh, people will follow the leadership of, of yourself and the county. And uh, we'll do this carefully and we'll all uh, stay healthy and get our economy started again. So thanks uh, to everyone who's contributed to that.
Thank you. And to our newest counselor, Dave Frank?
I'd like to thank everyone for welcoming me so thoroughly. Um, I also wanted a big thank you to all the staff who have helped me with my learning curve over the last few months. With education and information that has really made this transition really so far fairly easily for me. But I also want to echo uh, all the council's comments about the thanking the community members for the, all the hard work they're doing. And really coping with a really incredibly tough situation. And I want to just salute all of our residents of Montrose. Thank you for being a good group of people. And thank you for helping us to uh, achieve a level of safety and comfort that we might not have had if not for the cooperation of our citizenry. And uh, congratulations to Mayor Bynum and to Mayor Protem Glassbell. Um, looking forward to working with you guys for the next few years.
Thank you, thank you very much. I'll echo what my fellow counselors have said. Thank you to our community, especially to those who have isolated themselves at a great financial and emotional cost. Because it protects our community and it really is a very impressive display of civic mindedness that will benefit our community very much. So thank you to those citizens who are staying home and keeping us safe. I would also like to, to really send my, my thoughts and prayers to the families and friends of the nine folks who passed away from COVID. And also other members of our community who've lost loved ones during this difficult time, including a friend who lost her mother. And it's really um, really difficult because you can't be surrounded by your family and friends for funerals or memorial. It's a very strange time to be grieving the loss of a loved one. And so I just want to let her and, and anyone else in that situation know that I am thinking about them. So very serious note to end on, but these are serious times. Thank you all for um, being great public servants for your time and your energy. Any further comments before I entertain a motion to adjourn? Thank you, everyone. Keep doing the good work you're doing. Motion? Thank you very much. Stay safe, everyone.
Good night.
Bye, Barbara. You too.
See y'all, everyone.